Call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody back to the work session. Good to see all these smiling faces. Uh, let's see. Any questions with the agenda? Questions on the consent agenda? We probably got some things on there we need to talk about.
I'll ask a question.
Alrighty.
Is it routine if you change the principals to rekey all the locks? Is that what that bid is for on the vern?
Uh, it's not routine, but particular case there. Go ahead Gary. And also, we've been asked, uh, anyone that speaks, please step to the podium because they can't pick up what you're saying and the viewer can't. So, Mr. Clardy, if you would.
The, uh, Laverne High School is overdue for rekeying. Uh, and to answer your question directly, no, it's not standard procedure. But, um, we just feel like over the years, there's been so many keys that have gotten out that we want to get on the same system that we are on our new schools. Uh, where we have three different levels of key. One that'll only open one room, another key that'll open that room and a group of rooms, or a grand master key that'll open anything which usually maybe the principal would have. And, uh, there's just so many keys that floated around over the years. We want to make sure that we get that taken care of. And, uh, we've done it on several of our other schools just out of, uh, maintenance fund. But there's so many different locks up there on the different doors and things that we're having to replace some hardware is what makes that so expensive.
Thank you.
Since these keys are, are for our institution or our building, they can't be duplicated.
They can't. There's only three of us that are in the entire, uh, system that are on the list that can have those keys made. It takes a special blank and then we have to contact the company directly and they will, uh, cut those keys for us. And then we will pick them up and distribute them to the principal.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? Mr. Jernigan. Mr. Jern- first, Mr. Jernigan. Mr. Jernigan, number one. Mr. Jernigan, two questions.
How many schools do we have with this special, uh, lock system with, uh, with the security of remaking keys? Do we have any others?
Um, that have the issue or that are already on a new system?
That are on the system that only a certain group of people.
There's, uh, there's probably, um, fifteen or twenty of those or maybe a few more. But there's also a bunch of schools that we have rekeyed that are on a, you know, a particular system that may be different from what we're specing now. So I'd say we've gotten that down to, um, maybe there may be ten or so left out there. But they're smaller schools and they're not high schools.
I, I think that's, uh, money well spent with that type of.
Doc, Doris?
My question has to do with the non-faculty volunteer coaches. And I'm wondering if it would be of benefit to, to someone reading our material and the board members if we knew the sport they would be affiliated with.
You know, right now, I will say this, it's regulated by the T double S double A. Uh, you can't have, uh, step up here, Ms. Barnes, but you can't have over X number in any given sport. So we're in compliance. Secondly, I, I remind also the viewer that they're fingerprinted, uh, at the expense of the school, not expense of the school board. Uh, I'd say I think we've kind of gotten that under control. But go answer Mr. Doris, Jernigan.
I will. We didn't put the sport on there because sev- once we have a volunteer coach approved, then another school may use that same person during the school year, maybe for a different sport. It's not common, but it may happen. But I can certainly start adding the sports. I have that information.
I guess I'm just asking status of question more than anything else because, you know, in my tenure here, we've, I've never known where any of these people have, the sports that they've been affiliated with and...
I'd be happy to do that. I can add that without a problem. And I'll do that from this point forward.
We don't, other board, I don't know. It should be whether other board members care. It's important. Maybe it's not important.
Put it on that, yeah, that'd be good, that'd be good information.
Sure.
Good information.
More information's better.
Sir?
We used to have it on that.
Mr. Todd said he thought we used to put it on there. I think, I thought we did.
We did. And then when we changed, we went through and revised the procedures with the committee under Mr. Gill to look at how we were approving those volunteer coaches. And we set the guidelines to go along with T double S double A. And again, because some of these folks might be recommended by another school for a different sport, I didn't always put them back on since they'd already been approved one time. So we just dropped listing the sports, but I can easily add that back to it. So I'll do that in the future.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? Okay, let's go to number nine.
Uh, Mr. Sandvik's got to leave as soon as we get finished here for a budget meeting at the courthouse, five thirty. First up, uh, general practice budget amendments. This amendment reduces career ladder revenue count forty-six, six, one, oh, by one hundred fourteen thousand seventy dollars and reduces expenditures for career ladder and adjust extended contract expenditures for a reduction in expenditures of one hundred fourteen thousand seventy dollars. Uh, these are state funds that have declined as teachers in these programs have retired. And recommended we amend the one hundred fourteen thousand seventy dollars from career ladder revenue account forty-six, six, ten, and reduce a total of one hundred fourteen thousand seventy dollars in related expenditures for career ladder and to adjust extended contract expenditures as presented.
Any questions? Two.
This amendment budgets, uh, ten thousand dollar contribution to our coordinated school health program that Middle Tennessee Medical Center made towards a fitness center at Smyrna Middle School. Other funds from the state's coordinated school health grant will cover the balance of this expenditure. Uh, the safe schools part of the amendment is in function seventy-two, one, three, oh. The amendment covers one hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars in revenues and expenditures. These funds must be spent this school year for this program. There is also a revenue account change for this year's safe school grant because it is funded from the state fiscal stimulus money. Recommended we amend ten thousand for a grant from Middle Tennessee Medical Center and the related coordinated school health expenditures and to amend one hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars in safe school revenue from the state and those related expenditures as presented.
Questions?
It says, uh, must be spent this school year. Are we talking about nine, ten, or are we talking about ten and eleven?
Nine, this, this year, by six thirty?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So we've got basically a week.
Well, we've got, so, go ahead. I mean, we've got some materials and positions, but go ahead. Or equipment, I mean.
We've actually already requisitioned the equipment to spend this money because the state notified us. We couldn't carry it over this year. So we have about eighty thousand dollars in equipment. Based on the needs assessment that went out to the schools, we'd already identified what was needed in terms of DVRs, cameras for inside and outside, uh, radios and things like that. So we've had the whole list and we're ready to go.
Any other questions?
So you had a, you had a warrant list then that was available?
Yes, sir. We're ready, so.
Three.
This amendment real allocates one hundred forty thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars in already budgeted classified staff expenditures and twenty-five thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars in related benefits, a total of one hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars to the budget lines where those funds are needed. Most of the funds being real allocated are available because of unfilled educational assistant positions. Uh, so the recommendation is to amend one hundred forty thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars in budgeted classified staff budget line and twenty-five thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars in budgeted benefits to other classified staff expenditures and benefits as presented.
Questions?
I'm just, I'm, uh, just curious. Basically just shifting money around within the classified, I understand that, but what's, what's actually going on is, I see where you, you're staying within staff, it looks like. But what kind of expenditures are you talking about?
Jeff, address it.
Each year, as the year unfolds, we, there's that phrase I use, turnover. People coming and going, more or less experienced than the previous employee. And, uh, these funds, one, one of the areas we always, not always, often are kind of short in. There's always a demand for more clerical help at the schools. So we gen- often move some money in there in June and some more money for additional custodians in June. Those are the, that's the bulk of where the money's being spent. The rest are just adjustments.
You're basically talking additional hires, same way with the next, number four there, I guess, on certified staff.
Number four is more due to the turnover than any additional staffing.
When we, uh, when the schools paint their hallways and their bathrooms, understanding is that the central office provides the paint and the school paints the building. Who does that? Are, are, is that administrators, is that the?
You're talking about that actually does the painting?
Yes, sir.
Uh, typically the custodian.
Okay.
I, I would say this, though, there are cases where the, the job is, would be so overwhelming that we do actually, uh, contract out or send our maintenance people down to, to paint and help out. But, you know, small jobs, we supply the paint, custodial stuff.
But that, none of the, uh, these funds would not go for something like that then?
They could.
Could.
Yeah, could.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, at the end of the year, you know, as, as Mr. Sandvik says, there's multiple requests for additional hours, uh, and, you know, they justify it. We try to help out when possible, especially if we know there's a big project.
And on the office staff issue, three of the requests I've had come in in the last three weeks are very, one, Brown's Chapel, they need some additional hours with this startup year. And then with the switch in administrations, uh, Mr. Dirk Ash has asked for additional hours to help with that. Various transitions and all like that come up and we try to accommodate them if there's a good reason.
Any questions on that?
Four. This amendment real allocates two hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars in already budgeted certified staff expenditures and twenty-two thousand four hundred in related benefits, a total of two hundred forty-six thousand six hundred to the budget lines where those funds are needed. Most of the funds being real allocated are being real allocated because of the mix between vocational regulated education classes and the payment of negotiated bonuses for national certification. Uh, recommended we amend two twenty-four, two hundred in budgeted certified staff budget lines and twenty-two thousand four hundred budgeted benefits to other certified staff expenditures and benefits as presented.
Questions? Doc?
This, uh, negotiated bonuses for national certification, explain that.
Teacher, teacher can earn, uh, national certification by, it's very, what's the word, strenuous, very, uh, very, real challenging on their part. We agreed that when they did that, I think it was negotiated through the REA, that we would pay them, what, three thousand dollar bonus, is that what it was? Four thousand dollar bonus for one time for earning, uh, that distinction. Uh, and it's certainly a, a challenge. I don't think we, how many, how many we got across the system that is nationally board certified now? Not many.
Maybe twenty-six when we include the, uh, school psychologists that were appointed this year.
So twenty-six out of twenty-six hundred.
And Mr. Gill and Mr. Jernigan, this was part of the differentiated paid plan that the state said we had approved a couple of years ago.
Right.
And it was to, to be negotiated and added into the contract.
But we're not giving twenty-six people bonuses this year.
I think that's the total number. It's about twenty-six over the course of the past two years and yes, sir, we have.
When they earn that national board certification, there, there's a one-time payout for it. Now, it's my understanding, they also, it requires a contribution on their part besides just their own personal time, financial.
About two thousand dollars to go through the process.
Yeah.
It's kind of like an incentive that you do it and then we assist them when they get the bonus.
Yeah.
By recognizing their challenges they were through.
Any other questions?
This amendment funds seven hundred four thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars in additional employee medical insurance costs for the year. The source of the funding is a net decrease of six hundred thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars in already budgeted staff expenditures and a hundred and four thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars in related benefits, a total of seven hundred four thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars. Uh, most of the staff funds being real allocated are available due to turnover in classified positions. The increase in the staff amendments are just budget adjustments and not changed to positions. And we recommend that you amend seven hundred four thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars in additional employee medical insurance costs and reduce staff expenditures by six hundred thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and one hundred four thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars in related benefits as presented.
So we, you, we've got seven hundred thousand dollars we weren't expecting, is that what that means?
Well, maybe it's, for example, uh, you know, additional hours that weren't used in custodial line items, uh, EAs that we didn't renew. Uh, ultimately, there's a, roughly a six hundred thousand dollars that we could use to put towards, uh, medical insurance. You know, some years there's nothing or close to nothing, other years there's more.
So it's all going toward insurance, that's why?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Number six.
This amendment covers four hundred thirty-five thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars in additional employee retirement expenditures by reallocating two hundred eighty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars from the line items for electricity, seventy-one thousand from vacant EA, uh, positions, and seventy-five thousand four hundred seventy, seventy-nine dollars in various other employee benefit accounts. The increase in FICA and Medicare in function seventy-one, one hundred, regular instruction are due to the savings from pre-tax benefits that were primarily budgeted in that function. This amendment adjusts FICA and Medicare throughout the budget to reflect actual effect of pre-tax benefits. Recommend that we amend four hundred thirty-five thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars in additional employee retirement expenditures by reallocating two hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars from the line item for electricity, seventy-one thousand nine dollars from vacant EA assistance, and seventy-five thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars in various other employee benefits accounts as presented.
Mr. Blair?
Geothermal, is that the response? Is that why we have that?
You know, we're saving money on geothermal, uh, no denying that. You know, we talked a little about that today, about how much geothermal's helped, about how much, you know, uh, Excel energies, lighting's helped, how much the sensors have helped. But we'd probably have to do an exhaustive study to break it down, but I don't think there's any question that we're saving in all of those areas.
Any other questions?
B. Centralized Cafeteria Fund, one forty-three, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven budget. Two thousand ten, two thousand eleven operating budget for the centralized cafeteria fund has the following major components. And we compare two thousand ten, two thousand eleven budget versus two thousand nine, two thousand ten budget and the chains. Uh, it's pretty interesting. I think you note on revenues, we anticipate, I mean, it's entirely possible there may be less revenue this, next year than there was this year. And that would probably be reflective of the federal government's, uh, contribution, right, Mr. Sandvik?
And we probably will fit by the 10, 11.
And we probably what?
Sorry about that. We probably won't hit this budgeted revenue number in the current year either because of the federal reimbursements.
Okay. Uh, staff, uh, there'll be some increase in staff, given, uh, the fact that we've got new schools and more kids. Uh, benefits, we've already talked about the contribution for insurance, retirement going up. Operating equipment, also, there's a need to purchase, uh, additional equipment next year within the schools and the total expenses are reflected. It's also showing that we would lose one million one hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. We're able to do that because the state requires you have three months operating expenses, expenses, and we have more than that. So we can absorb those additional costs across the system for equipment and in other areas. So, uh, the, the revenue numbers are conservative and may be increased after analyzing by operations. Operating expenses are up because of the opening of the two new middle schools and Central Magnet School. Uh, the equipment expenditure has been increased as part of the plan to use some of the excess ballot that must be used to improve the program. And we recommend that you approve the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven budget for the ca- cafeteria fund, one forty-three as presented.
Questions, Doc?
Uh, general question. Has the consolidated cafeteria program met our expectations? Are we financially better off? Are we providing quality food for the students?
I, I, go ahead. I don't know if you're finished.
Go through it.
Yeah, I mean, I, of course, we were proponent for doing it, so we're gonna say, uh, yes, and I'm gonna go beyond that. I mean, absolutely, it's been success. Don't we ever hear a peep from the principals? I think they're happy with it. I think cafeteria manager is now happy with it. Uh, and it's done what we originally suggested. It's, it's allowed us to help some people that otherwise couldn't help themselves, you know, with needed, uh, equipment, et cetera. And, uh, I don't know, I think it's working very well. You want to comment, Jeff?
I, I think that's one of the big points, that this equipment expenditure and this, the current year's equipment expenditure, we're not having to just look at the schools that have very healthy balances. We monitor those schools to make sure they are running as profitable a program as possible. But the, the mix of students you have at your school will determine a lot of the profitability. And we're, we're doing some improvements that are needed at schools that did not have enough money previously.
Mr. Blair?
Mr. Gill just answered it, thank you.
Okay. Any other question? Doc?
As I looked at the list for equipment, I noticed that, uh, sixty thousand dollars for the vans that we talked about, fifty-four thousand dollars for the cabinets to hold the food inside the van. What, we have vans now that are?
Yes. In order to have the vans by the time school started, we moved that particular expenditure up and that, the, the money's listed in the budget will be used for something else. Probably did a little swap between the two years.
Well, what are we doing with the, uh, vans and the cabinets and things that we have now?
Uh, we have one van that I believe we will still be using. And the other, basically, we were using cars and pickup trucks and did, yeah.
This is an upgrade.
Yes, sir.
Computer upgrade, I noticed. Who, does food service operate separate from our technology department or do they use it?
Not, not on technology necessarily, right?
We coordinate very closely with our technology department, but it, it's a separate software. Uh, Mr. Fred Blair watches over that, but he works carefully with our tech folks when it comes to equipment, software upgrades, server issues.
But with respect to expenditures, when we upgrade technology in the cafeterias, that comes out of that centralized fund?
Yes, sir.
C. Uh, capital projects fund, capital projects fund one seventy-seven is funded by five cents of the property tax. The two thousand ten, two thousand eleven budget uses all the anticipated revenue, which is two million two hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred twenty dollars in order to fund the list of the project. Recommend that you approve the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven budget for the major capital projects fund and the list of the projects as presented. Mr. Clardy, you want to tell them how we arrived at what's on that list?
Yes. Um, there are several different, um, things that we're wanting to fund this year within that budget. And, uh, Smyrna Elementary, uh, school roofing, a lot of that roofing needs to be replaced. Also Stewart Borough Elementary, uh, the majority of that roof. And then, uh, McFadden, we're going to fund the balance of the McFadden renovation that we're doing now. Then the, uh, city is requiring us to put grease traps anywhere we have city sewer now. So central metal grease traps are also included in this budget. Uh, we wrote them a letter recently, they're requiring them with this renovation that we're doing now for the Magnet School, but they delayed that until the following year so we could actually budget for it. Yeah, uh, as, uh, Mr. Sandvik said, we can't, since that's part of the building, we can't cover that from the cafeteria fund. So we have to cover it within, uh, the maintenance or the building budget. Also, uh, Kittrell and Lath Cassus, the state is requiring us to do some upgrades on those sewer systems, so we have, uh, money in there for that. And, uh, also, we'll be bringing forth presentation to you on those two, uh, wastewater plants at some point in the next few weeks to, uh, explain all of that to you. Uh, and then, uh, within this, we have the campus school window replacement. So, uh, with all of those, and you have a list of those there, you should have that in your packet. That totals about two point two million.
Rest is black.
What's a grease trap?
A grease trap is a box that has a group of baffles in it that separates the grease from the wastewater that's coming out of the cafeteria. It traps the grease so it doesn't get into the sewer system, so the city sewer has to deal with it at their plant. And then we, uh, have it removed by a company from that grease trap twice a year, uh, to clean it out so we can start over with it.
You know, one of the, I'm sorry.
No.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, after we, uh, replace these windows at campus, where does that leave us on the campus school?
There's still some work to be done after that as far as that last phase, Gary. I don't remember off the top of my head.
Um, there's, uh, the front needs to be done, the entry of the school, and then, um, the outside, the tuck pointing of the building and cleaning that up, removing that tower from the top. And then some various aesthetic upgrades inside. Also, um, the university budget is, budgets for a thing called extraordinary maintenance every year. And they've been putting about thirty thousand dollars in that which they've used for project. So this year, we're, have used that money for various items. Uh, the latest thing is we're using nineteen thousand dollars of that money to replace floor, floor covering in several classrooms. That will also, um, address part of that list. So we're trying to work through the list, uh, as quickly as we can. I believe we have to two thousand and twelve, uh, August two thousand and twelve, finish those items. So we're kind of slowly knocking it off.
About how much more money after this could you, could you ballpark?
I think it'll probably be in the neighborhood of, uh, six or seven hundred thousand dollars.
And that'll bring us to a total of, do you know that? I should remember that, but I don't.
I, I should too, but I don't remember it right off.
I should three and I don't remember, but we can track it down till we now.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I know you are. But you know, one of the good things is that we are, how many schools we have left to renovate? David Urie, Smyrna Primary?
Uh, and Smyrna Middle do some things there.
Okay. You know, here in the next year or two, we'll have some of those out of the way. I know still lingering out there, as a matter of fact, we discussed today, is that Smyrna Laverne bleachers to the tune of about nine hundred thousand dollars, and there are other projects I'm sure that we'd all like to see get done. Uh, but we kinda, it looks like with revenues, we are, might be limited to that five cent fund to get some of these things done. But, uh, you know, once we get some of these renovations done, what do we generally spend, about six hundred thousand, six hundred fifty thousand? Been coming in a little cheaper, uh, and maybe if we have roofs that hold up for a while, we'll, we'll get some needed projects done. Kinda agree?
I agree, uh, we're, you know, working, we're trying to work as inexpensive as we can and get the job done within allotted money we have, and I think we've been doing a pretty good job of that and trying to figure creative ways to spend the money to address everything that's in the system.
Any other questions?
Capital Projects Fund, one seventy-seven, two thousand nine, two thousand ten amendments. This amendment budgets an additional twenty-three thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars in property taxes that the Capital Improvement Fund will receive this year, an additional one hu- thousand, four hundred eight dollars in trustees commission, and increases fund balance by twenty-one thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars. Amendment also increases architect fees and reduces maintenance and repair services, building by one thousand dollars. Uh, recommend that we amend an additional twenty-three thousand, three hundred twenty-five in property tax rev- revenue to the Capital Improvements Fund, additional fourteen hundred eight dollars in trustees commission, with just one thousand between architect fees and maintenance, repair services, building, and increase fund balance by twenty-one thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars.
Questions? Ten.
Request for approval for possible funding. Special Education Department seeking board approval for possible funding for orientation and mobility training for one current employee. Jerry Carmichael, a special education vision specialist, will be participating in a two-year program with Salius, Salius University in Elkins Park, Pennsylvania to obtain certification becoming orientation and mobility specialist. Orientation and mobility specialists help blind or visually impaired children know where they are in a space and where they want to go, orientation. It also helps them to be able to carry out a plan to get there, mobility. Salius University will cover a hundred percent of the tuition for the first year and plans to cover a substantial portion of the tuition for the second year. There are plans for Tennessee Department of Education involvement support, but no current agreements have been finalized. Special Education Department wants to alert the board of the possibility that some part of the second year tuition may be needed, uh, may need to be covered from federal IDEA Part B Special Education Funds in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. If funding through federal funds is required, an agreement will be written from Ms. Carmichael's continued service for a set number of years, or reimbursement by the funds expended. Recommend that we approve the concept of the funding of any portion of the tuition cost for the second year of the certification program for orientation and mobility through Salius University to be paid from federal IDEA's Part B Special Ed Funds.
Questions? Oh.
You know, I'm a little bit hesitant about, um, being thinking well to do this, this far ahead of the game. Almost, now, explain to me what makes this necessary, that this person has to get this certification?
Well, we serve several kids that are construed as, as visually impaired. Uh, Shirley, explain it to me. Don, I, you can help me with it, but Shirley, explain it.
Well, I can actually talk to it a little bit, as well as Mr. Odom, I'm sure, but, uh, I've got a daughter, not the one who's here tonight, but my other daughter, Abby, uh, who's a student in the city system, is visually impaired, and she needs this service. And it's incredibly hard to come by. There's certainly nobody in the city system who's got the certification, and I take it there's nobody in the county system either, and so you've got to go through the Tennessee school for the blind, and they're fine folks down there, but they're pretty, they're stretched thin. And so, I, I didn't know anything about this item being on the agenda, but I can say in terms of a service that the system provides, it's, it's critical. Now, it's a small number of students, thankfully, who'll need it, but those who need it really need it. And I would imagine this will enable the system to do it a little more effectively, a little more timely.
To, to kinda pick up on what Mark is talking about, within the school system, according to this chart here, we have three blind, three children who are blind, and two that are blind and hearing impaired. So, it would take a very special teacher, and it would be great that our system would have someone with those kinds of qualifications.
We're actually doing this now, but we're having to con- pay contracted services to do it. So, if you can get someone certified, you can do it from within. For instance, if for somebody visually impaired, how to use the cane, to mobility with the cane, um, how they would get on public transportation, a bus, or some things like that. It's things we have to do that we're now having to pay for out of contracted services that we might be able to do within the house. That's the purpose of it, Mr. Gill.
So, it's not a requirement by the federal government or some, that we, we have this. It is this person, we just have to be able to provide the service. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
That's right. Thank you, sir.
Questions? Terry?
I'm just reading this, it's, it's paid through federal funds, correct?
If, if the university doesn't pick up the entire tuition, yeah, we'd fall back on federal IDEA fund, yeah.
Any other questions? We're down to general discussion of the board. Anyone have anything to discuss with the player?
I was pleased to read in the, uh, D and J about, uh, Brown's Chapel and some of our other schools with, uh, recycling. And did I read that they, they recycle almost sixty percent? I, I forget.
They do. We, we met with, uh, Ms. Keesling, I don't know, two years ago, and tried to recycle in schools, uh, as best possible, without it becoming too much of a burden to the school. And I don't wanna sound insensitive to those who wanna recycle, but it's, uh, you know, it's pretty easy, not pretty easy, but it's, it's doable, you know, to section off your, you know, your paper, and somebody come pick it up and take it to a, a container, and when you get into aluminum cans and plastics and all that, it requires manpower to separate and sort and carry stuff around. Also, we were getting calls, you know, these green dumpsters they'll put outside that are, that, that, that they call on you to dump paper in? Well, stuff other than paper was getting dumped in it, and we were getting kinda chastised by the, not chastised, but we were getting calls from the, uh, from the vendor saying, you know, you guys gotta do a better job. Well, we can't monitor that at all times, so while it, you know, we'd like to, you know, do more recycling, it's, it's a little easier said than done, and we have cut back on styrofoam used in the cafeterias, and we've done some other things, uh, in connection or conjunction with Ms. Keesling's request, and I appreciate she's worked hard with us too, and I think she's mentioned publicly several times that the school system worked for her, so.
At some point in time, that landfill is going to, is going to fill up, and, uh, recycling is going to be a way to help manage that thing past, uh, past its point. Uh, you know, with the drought that we experienced, Lake Lanier, which is a reservoir for, uh, Atlanta, uh, just about dried completely up, so some of the things that we're facing as a community is where to put our trash, good drinking water in, in, in space. And, uh, the more that we as a system can be involved in that, I think it'll be better for, for all of our sister, all of our citizens, especially our young people growing up to become citizens of the community.
Right. Clardy, did you have something you wanna say on that?
Sure.
I think, uh, what they were referring to in, uh, cooperation with Mr. Gill and, uh, Mac from the county landfill, or, uh, and, uh, also Ms. Keesling, uh, we came up with a company who does single stream, uh, recycling. So, we take everything from a cafeteria and, uh, all the paper, the cans, all of those types of things, and put them in one container. They go out into another container, and then they're hauled off-site and separated. Uh, and that's the only, um, deal that we've been able to come up with that we could, everyone could live with, and it, it's not so confusing for the, the children, uh, it's easier on all the employees. And plus, the recycling company picks these dumpster, dumpsters up at the school and dumps them, and then hauls them off. It reduces the cost to the county because they don't have to make so many runs to our school. And, uh, we're also in the process, uh, with Mr. Gill and, uh, the county in trying to add some more schools to this. So, it's, it's reducing, uh, the landfill, and it's also cutting the cost to the county, plus it's also doing a part for the green and the environment.
Just a quick comment, uh, Mr. Clardy kinda coordinated that effort with Ms. Keesling and Magno, and, uh, it was really neat. That con- whole concept's neat, you know, it's amazing what they can do. How many people are doing that right now in the county? Not too many, I know.
I believe we've got, uh, five or six schools doing it, and we're trying to move on to some of the other schools. But we invited, uh, schools that wanted to participate and, uh, make a good pilot program, so we're working to move on to more, expand it, yes.
We started this program in Stuart's Borough in nineteen ninety-three, and, uh, got the vice president to come visit the school because of the recycling program. I don't know if that's still at that level, but we had some teachers that were very passionate about it at that time. I think it's probably not at the same level, but I'm sure they do some recycling down there. It's important to, to do these things. Any other questions on, on this? I, I got something I wanna comment on. Uh, we're running pretty close to this, uh, budget meeting with the county commission, and the last meeting, uh, I think Mr. Blair had made a comment that he had some issue that he wanted to discuss, and Mr. Hodge had an issue that he wanted to discuss, uh, so I don't know whether he, uh, we want to have another meeting, or we wanna discuss it at the end of a meeting, or, I don't care how we do it, but I think there's a couple of questions about the budget that some people would like to ask, and, and, uh, so. Jeff was supposed to be working on something with that, but I haven't heard anything back. I don't know if anybody else has heard anything or not. I don't know what Mr. Blair's issue is. I know, uh, Mr. Hodge had an issue with the two percent that had been promised, the, the, the classified people, and I don't know, it needs to be discussed whether we, whether we do it or whether we don't do it. It needs to be discussed at some time before we meet with the county commission, I would assume.
Well, we'll meet next Tuesday, don't we? Well, I guess you could add it, we could add it, couldn't we add an item to Thursday's agenda?
I thought we met the twenty-ninth with the commission.
Next Tuesday.
Okay, whatever. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board? So, discuss it on Thursday. I mean, that, I don't know that we have another real option, given the schedule.
Eight to twenty-fifth, Mr. Hodge?
I definitely like to discuss it, whether it's next Thursday, uh, you know, I just take the wait to the last minute, uh, and we get popped of this thing to basically pass it on and approve it. Uh, you know, like I said, as you mentioned, I got, I got, still got the issue with the commitment we made, and, uh, see if anything's come to surface on that.
So, you wanna add an item to the agenda? Can we do that? We got enough time between now and then to do that, yeah. Let's do that then, and then if anybody has any issues, you can come back and we can discuss them, and the board does, the board will do what it wants to do, but I think it ought to have be a chance to discuss some things. Anyone else?
Uh, I just wanna make a general comment, uh, I know most, uh, probably all the board members got the same email I got, uh, from Mr. Crispin out at, on Daniel McKee, uh, without going into a lot of details. It's a pretty touching letter that he received from the, the student's, uh, uh, mother as far as, uh, how good that program's, how good that program did, did hurt child. And I know, since I've been on the board here, you, we don't hear a lot of the good things that go on with these alternative schools, and, uh, uh, you know, I guess I wanna just thank him for bringing it to our attention, and somewhere down the, in the future, I, I'd like to hear from him. I know we heard from Smyrna West at one time, possibly hear from his group, uh, but it was a pretty touching deal, I thought, and, uh, you know, I appreciate him sharing that with us.
I had a lady tell me the other day about Smyrna West, that her son was over there now, and she just wished he could stay there. So, I mean, that's, that speaks very highly of the program, and, and, of course, that's not the objective. The obje- objective is to get them back in their schools, but she said that he's just made a remarkable improvement, so.
I'd like Thursday night, some comment on the SAT tests that the children have taken, to have seven of our children to qualify for, whether they go to Duke or not for recognition is, but they, if they can do that well, seventh graders and seventy-something of children, I think.
Uh, I believe that's right, yeah.
Uh, that, that's outstanding, I believe.
Any other questions? Mr. Grant Kelly?
Went to a few, uh, graduations over the last week, and, uh, Wayne, I think, was there at most of them too, and, uh, it was a, it was a tremendous amount of scholarships was given, uh, and not every one of the schools, uh, gave the figures, but, uh, there was a couple of them that over five million per school that they got scholarships in, and, uh, these are the larger schools, and, and, uh, Eaglehead had a tremendous amount for the smaller schools they are. But, uh, this, it tells us that we've got some good students, and we've got, uh, good, uh, teachers that are preparing them for it, and, uh, that's gonna help us in the future.
That brings up another issue too. Oakland's, uh, Oakland's, uh, graduation had the IB program, we're in a different cap and gown, and I thought that was kind of a nice touch. And, uh, also, if you've got, if you've read your emails today, you've gotten some from, from, uh, uh, Mr. Evans about, uh, the IB program and possibility of it being in all schools, or, or be able to require certain number of courses. I didn't understand at all, but I'm sure we'll hear some more about that in the future. And, uh, I don't know how that'll work, but I, I think it's probably a good program and a good thing to do, so.
Anything else?